But I signed it and taught people in to sign it for we because they'd say, what is this? He's trying to get on the ballot. I said, I don't care if you're gonna vote for him or not. A man's got a right to try to run if he wants to. That's the way I feel. But yeah, I was getting a little irritated there. I wish I'd had another one. Well, you probably have to do it again, but that's okay. And I'm not mad about it.
No, but I need to know.
It's kind of irritating, you know, because like I said, you get somebody fresh on something. You want them to get in there and pull the trigger and then they could get them out. You know, put one at this door all the way out and one at this door. We can catch everybody. You ain't gotta catch them in the parking lot. They were just excited about it. Well, you guys weren't that young. I forget what their work guy was, but yeah. I mean, they weren't that young, but they were excited about getting them. I mean, they were doing a good job getting you things, but we were trying to get elected. Yeah, we was trying to get elected. Hey there.
Okay, I just want to make sure. I don't want to catch y'all.
Hey, good to see you too. Thank you. You gotta work for this. Hello, sir. Nice to meet you. Nice clean cut look you got there. You got a haircut today, didn't you? Well, I need to take another picture of you then.
How much you get? How much you get? Thank you.
A little over a thousand.
So are you good now? So you, let me ask, are you related to, so is? I signed it. Just to be clear, it's to get you on the ballot. Right, on the ballot for November. So not going to the primary because primaries aren't very dependent. So could you, could you run as a?
And I know, that's why I say, oh, no worries. Gee, do you still want to do, do you still want to do that research? Okay, I was just reminding you. You're welcome.
Yeah. Oh, thanks. Yeah, yeah. I reckon so.
Doing all right?
Jimmy, you won reelection, then Jim. Jim will be here.
Nothing crazy. I know, I don't know if you got a copy or not. I know earlier Mr. Logan, the school board brought some paperwork by. Another fellow dressed for not being handed to the council. This time I'll be here. I don't know if he laid one up there for you or not. I didn't get one either. It's fine. If they address it, great. If not, no.
Mr. Referee, what's going on?
Yeah, thank you. Squeak by. Let's see, you got yours or that? I think I said.
Hey Robbie, are you all set?
Yeah, I'm good. I'm good to go.
All righty, good evening, folks. It's right at seven o'clock. We'll go ahead and get going. It's Thursday, November ninth, 2023, 7:00 PM. Welcome to the regularly scheduled town council meeting. Mayor Crawford cannot be with us tonight. Mr. Rigsby should be here shortly. If you would, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every justice from all.
All right, if you would please bow your heads, Councilman Jones will lead us in our invocation.
Thank you, Mr. Foy. Dear Lord, we thank you for the many blessings you bestowed upon us as individuals, our families, and the town of Stokesdale. And we thank you for this place we call home. We thank you for our constitution and thank you for those that are willing to serve in elected positions. It may be, sometimes be a bad system, but it's the best bad system we got. Dear Lord, we ask you to lead, guide, and direct us and watch over all of us and give us the wisdom that we need to conduct the town's business. In Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Amen. Thank you, Tim. All right, first item on the agenda is to review and adopt the agenda. I'll entertain a motion to do so.
I'd like to add something to the agenda.
Of course.
It's just, just a short thing. You want to talk just a little bit about water thieves.
Okay.
It'll be very short, just trying to get a little, little head start on it.
Okay, well, we'll add that after item number 10. And before citizens' comments. How would you like that worded, Jimmy?
Just like I said it.
All righty.
Water thieves.
We have water thieves as item number 10A. All right. Are there any additional changes?
Yes, Mr. Foy. I'd like to add an additional item, and that would be the discussed maintenance under the covered area of the front of the building here.
Okay.
The front entrance maintenance.
All right, we'll call that item 10B. All right, are those the only two changes to the agenda? I'll go ahead and make the motion that we adopt the agenda with those two changes.
I'll second.
All right. Call question, Jimmy?
Ah.
Tim?
Aye.
And I'm aye. Next on the agenda, we have one set of minutes in front of us from April 6, 2023. This was a special town council meeting. It was a budget workshop. I'll make that motion that we adopt the minutes from April 6, 2023, special call meeting, as presented.
I'll second.
Any discussion? I'll call question, Jimmy?
Ah.
Tim?
Aye.
And I'm aye. Moving on, we have public safety reports. I'd like to welcome Chief Gordon, Stokesdale Fire Department. Welcome, Todd.
Good evening, council and citizens. So this report will be for the time period of October 1st through October 31st. And we ran a total of 93 calls during the month. The breakdown for those are 49 were medical-related, eight fire, and 36 of the other variety. So again, another busy month. We're staying above the 90, it seems like consistently now. That's a trend. We don't mind if we see it slack off a little bit. But like to touch base just a couple of things this, this month for our safety. The first one, I'm gonna touch on the obvious one, and that is, everybody keeps asking, is there a burning ban? Is there a burning ban? No, there's not a statewide burning ban. But as of 5:00 today, Rockingham County's Fire Marshal enacted one for Rockingham County. I know that does not affect the town of Stokesdale, but you know, we're neighbors. It does us because we cover district there. But it's just a very, very bad time for burning, and we highly encourage you not to do it. The bad part is, is we get calls, my neighbor's burning. Really, without a burn ban, there's nothing we can do except right up there and say, you know, this is a bad idea. If they say, it might be even, I'm gonna burn, our hands are really, are really tied at that point. So just like to remind everybody, wait till we get some significant rain, and that's not just a shower of rain. I mean, we, we need some rain to, to help call this. The other thing is, and I do this about once a year, and I talk about 911. And obviously, as we get more populated and we're on Main Street, it's easy to find the fire station. It's not like we're a city station setting back off somewhere and you don't see us. But we get a lot of people that come to the station, or they call the station and not use the 911 system. And I understand that you, you feel like you're tying up the system for something. But I, but I always send this message, that's very dangerous, because we could be out on a call. You could pull up at the fire station and nobody's there to answer the door, or nobody's there to answer the phone. And what you do is, is you delay the response to get your help to you. And the system is tiered so that when you make that call, it automatically responds like EMS or whomever you need. And if we happen to be tied up, then it's automatically gonna send somebody from Summerfield or Oak Ridge, depending where you're at. Even though it will let us know, and if we have something, we can break free from one call and go. But I really encourage people, I mean, if you're driving down the road, something happens and you're passing a fire station, you have to do what you have to do. But, but that system's in place, and it's a good system. I'm not gonna tell you it's perfect, but it's the best we got, and it, and it works. So I just encourage people to be very careful about doing that, because, you know, we could be out on a call at any time and you come with a true emergency, and there's nobody there. So now you've delayed even more when you have to make a phone call from the parking lot or something. And just one other thing, I have sent Robbie an email with the concerns and all the things that we talked about from the fire department side the other night at the DOT meeting. So he has that to put in your information packet that you're gonna send to them. Also regarding that meeting, I would just like to say kudos to everybody involved. The council, the, the state people. I thought that was a very good meeting. It was a meeting that did not get adversarial. It was very educational, I think, for everybody involved. Everybody was very respectful of each other's opinions. And I think that all in all, we, we came out of it with a lot of eye-opening things for the state, and we understood some things that the state probably hadn't looked at and, and some things that they probably couldn't do. But I, just like I say, I thought that was a, a very productive meeting, and thank you guys for letting us be a part of it.
Thank you, Todd.
Yep, thank you for being a part of it.
All right, we have the update.
Mr. Foy.
Yes, sir.
We don't have it on the agenda, but I think it would be appropriate to recognize young Mr. Mason Winfrey. He has, this is his first official town meeting. That's our deputy clerk. And I don't know what I'm gonna do insofar as confusing him with Mr. Winfrey, our town attorney. Old Mr. Winfrey.
Yeah, young Mr.
Well, we could say the high-paid Mr. Winfrey and the.
Well, yeah, so, so welcome, Mr. Mason Winfrey. Started with us a couple of weeks ago. He's our new town deputy clerk, working, working for Robbie, and we're glad, glad to have you, Mason. Absolutely. Welcome. All right, we'd like to turn it over to town clerk, Mr. Robbie Wagner, for the Guilford County Sheriff's Office update. Robbie?
Okay, for the month of October, the sheriff's office responded to a total of 168 calls for service within the Stokesdale town limits, resulting in a total of 18 formal case reports being filed. Of note, on 10/7, the sheriff's department took a report of multiple motor vehicle break-ins in the residence along Winding Hill Drive, resulting in the theft of a firearm and other miscellaneous items. All of the vehicles were left unlocked. The case remains under investigation. We'd like to remind all of our residents that the simple act of locking your car doors prevents motor vehicle break-ins. Please do not be fooled into a false sense of security based on, false sense of security because you live in a low-crime role area. And then on 10/13, deputies took report of a break-in and entering of an outbuilding at the 7100 block of Ellison Road, in which a Harley-Davidson motorcycle was stolen. The motorcycle has since been recovered. The case remains under investigation. And the calls by type were five burglary of a vehicle, one burglary of a residential, two disturbances, 13 alarms, one alcohol, 10 domestic, one weapons offense, one drug, two theft, 20 traffic, one motor vehicle theft, two noise violation, four accident, two rape, 88 other, 12 suspicious, two stolen property, and one vandalism. And that's it.
Thank you, Robbie.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Foy, I'd like to suggest that holidays are coming, the nights are longer now, that we ask Mr. Wagner to post this on the town's website and the town's Facebook page.
Okay.
I think, you know, I'd find myself doing it sometimes, too. I'll leave my vehicle doors unlocked, not that I intend to, but I'm just, you know, I'm home, don't think about it. And I think everybody could use that reminder.
Okay, certainly. I support that.
So put on, on the town's Facebook and website, reminding folks to lock your doors. Do you want me to put the entire report or just to lock your doors?
I, I think the entire report would be appropriate, and folks would know, know what the deputies are doing for them.
To build on that, I think it's, it's worthy to mention to lock your doors. Because that seems to be a recurring, one of the recurring reasons, not reasons, but why we have some break-ins. A lot, a lot of times, those doors are unlocked. Thank you for reading that, Robbie.
Absolutely.
All right, we're, move on to the administrative reports, staying with Mr. Robbie Wagner, town clerk. Robbie?
Yes, let's see here. So I'll start off with the water report. This is provided by Mrs. Hunsucker. We have five meters installed, 36 meters in stock, nine applications for a transfer of service and meters in, 12 meters slash applications on hold for builders, 20 work orders, and 23 811s, 786 water bills mailed out, and eight shelter rentals and meetings in the council chambers. And for the admin report, of course, again, we'd like to welcome our new deputy town clerk, Mr. Mason Winfrey, who began employment with the town on Wednesday, November the 1st. Town staff has made progress, and when I say staff, I mean, Mrs. Hunsucker, she's headed this up more so than anybody, on the, the lead service line inventory project that has to be completed and submitted to the NC Public Water Supply Section of the DEQ by October 16th of 2024. It seems like a long ways away, but it'll be here before you know it. Pat Wilson with NC DOT Division 7 has confirmed, and let's see, confirmed and concurs with the town's request to extend our comment period for Project R-5823, that being the improvements to North Carolina 65 and 68 near Stokesdale until Thursday, November 30th, 2023. Earlier today, I met with Mr. Jonathan Waters. He's the pandemic recovery budget analyst for Guilford County. The purpose of this meeting was to discuss the $3.1 million in ARPA funds awarded to the town by Guilford County in March of '23. And the highlights of that meeting are that the $3.1 million must be spent by the town by the end of December in 2026. Guilford County will soon provide the town with the $600,000 for the initial payment that was basically promised upon authorization of the grant contract. And in spring of 2024, so coming up next spring, folks from the Guilford County, I guess the pandemic recovery unit is what they're calling it, want to come out to the town of Stokesdale to visit and see these water line improvements with their own eyes. So that's something that they'll be reaching out to schedule. With regards to the town's current water line extension to add system redundancy on Coldwater Road, Hazen and Sawyer has recently completed the following. A preliminary engineering work to prepare for the project survey and notify all residents of pending survey and geotechnical work. And they are completing subcontracts with the surveying and geotechnical investigation firms. With regard to our other water line extension project on Ellisboro Road from the new buy right to Cornelius Corp. Nicole Kinnerly, the president of Kinnerly Engineering, has recently reached out and said that she thinks that they have all the permits and are ready for us to get the plans to contractors, and I'm assuming she means for the, the bid process. And so I'm just waiting on that final say-so from her to, to start the bid process.
Okay. Mr. Wagner?
Yes, sir.
I don't know what we do one way or the other, but are they aware of the planned intersection improvements at 65 and Ellisboro Road by NC DOT?
Well, I do know, I can't say for sure what they're aware of. I don't know what's going through their office, but I can say that they received permission from NC DOT for this water line extension in October of this year.
Okey-dokey. I wonder if this constitutes notification for all parties concerned, but I just hate for the town to pay for anything twice if something has to be modified at a later date.
I'm not sure. I don't know what's went to them in particular, but I do know that, I don't know, this seems like this project that affects that area with DOT is older than October, so surely that would have came into effect when they approved it, but I don't know. I'm not sure. But we can certainly check with her.
Well, certainly if the opportunity presents itself.
Let her know. I can do that. And then I don't want to go too deep into this, because I'm sure that Mr. Stevenson will mention it in his report, but with regard to the basketball and pickleball court project, it's moving along nicely. Most recently, the, it looks like the gates have been installed. And I assume the next step is gonna be the installation of the sport court material on top of the concrete pad. And with regard to the town's Christmas parade scheduled for this Saturday, I'm sorry, not this Saturday. Back up. For Saturday, December the 9th, 2023, a few Saturdays away. So far, we've gotten 22 parade applications totaling $225 in application fees, nine parade sponsors totaling $2,350 in sponsorship contributions. And we have received confirmation from DOT that we can temporarily close the roads in town during the parade. And then just a few housekeeping items, the nine rubber speed bumps and six rubber end caps with 18-inch galvanized steel spikes have arrived. So town council will just need to let town staff know how you want to proceed with getting those installed. Tomorrow, Friday, November the 10th, the Stokesdale Town Hall building will be closed in observance of Veterans Day. And, and then for myself, I'll be away from town hall next week, from Tuesday through Friday. I'll be attending the IMC Master Clerks Academy. And that's it for the admin report.
Thank you, Robbie.
Thank you, Robbie. Great job.
Yes, sir.
All right, next up, we have a planning board.
I'll let Mason take this one.
Okay.
All right. All right, the next regular town of Stokesdale planning board meeting scheduled for Thursday, November 16th, 2023, at 7:00 PM, inside the town hall council chambers, has been canceled. The reason for the cancellation of this meeting is because no applications were filed with the Guilford County Department of Planning and Development prior to the cutoff date of Thursday, October 19th, 2023. The Stokesdale town staff will prepare and publicly advertise an official notice of cancellation soon.
Okay. Thank you, Mason. Next up, we have Town Park Improvement Committee, Mr. T. Stevenson. Welcome, T.
Good evening. I'm T. Stevenson, the chairman of the Park Improvement Committee. Very pleased to report that, as Mr. Wagner mentioned, we're making good progress on schedule for the construction of the basketball and pickleball courts. As Robbie also mentioned, the next step, well, the fence has been installed with seven gates. Next step is the surface to be applied to the concrete pad. And then the footings for the basketball goals have been installed, so they'll go in after the surface. And then, of course, Mr. Johnson's crew will take care of some more landscaping and installation of some sidewalks there. So hopefully, in the next four or five weeks, we'll have completion on that. Stop me if I'm wrong. Okay. Now that the basketball and pickleball courts are nearing completion and the leaves are falling, the next step is to concentrate our efforts on the nature trails. So we'll be getting together as a group and going out and marking the course through, through the woods there and incorporating some ideas there. And then, of course, we'll start the clearing process, thinking that because the leaves are off the trees and there's less activity from other creatures, et cetera, that should be in hibernation. It would be a good time to establish these trails. And then again, we continue, continue to discuss additional programs that we can do to make sure that our facilities are being used to their utmost abilities there. Some of those things include additional lighting, additional security, additional fencing, lights for the soccer fields, benches, trash cans, et cetera. Trying to just spruce up our place a little bit and make it more functional.
Thank you, T.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have our financial reports. Ms. Kim Thacker, town finance officer and budget officer.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I would like to congratulate our re-elected three council members. Congratulations to all of you. Okay, we'll start with the general fund. In the ARPA account, we have $501,149.83. Bank of Oak Ridge money market account, $23,658. Bank of Oak Ridge SEDARs, $2,631,015.19. Fidelity checking, $389,722.91. Petty cash is $150. Our total investment earnings, interest earned this fiscal year-to-date for general fund is $31,792.69, of which $8,049.58 is for the month of October. I just wanted to let you guys know the remaining balance of our grants, the remaining funds to date. Our ARPA, the American Rescue Plan Act, the amount that was awarded was $725,475. The remaining funds is $324,361.67. The Guilford County ARPA grant, our amount awarded was $3,113,038. The remaining funds is $2,744,258. The North Carolina House Bill 1163, the amount awarded was $1,154,081.75. Remaining funds is $1,116,535,069. The North Carolina Division of Water Infrastructure, this is two. The amounts combined is $400,000. One, $300,000 asset inventory and assessment grant. The second is the pre-construction planning grant. The remaining funds is $400,000. The Small Town Development Grant that we received, that were awarded, was $50,000, and that is zero left. That was used for the pickleball courts. On our accounts receivable, Gary, our operator in responsible charge, the salary and FICA that is due to the Water Enterprise account is $593.82. Our shared overhead expenses for the month of October reimbursement is $12,851.87. The total for this fiscal year-to-date shared overhead expense is $46,268.43. Our sales tax refund year-to-date is $228.60. The total accounts receivable for the month of October is $13,677.29. Our total assets for the general fund that include our accounts receivable is $3,559,373.22. The state retirement for the town of Stokesdale contributes 12.85% for all full-time employees. For the month of October was $1,015.15. For this year, for this fiscal year-to-date is $3,964.06. I'll move on to the Water Enterprise account. For the Bank of Oak Ridge, our SEDARs is $513,592.25. Our capital reserve fund is $218,841.24. The fidelity checking is $744,932. Fidelity savings is $45,064.59. Our North Carolina Capital Management Trust Fund, the balance was $552,533.19. Our total investment earnings for the interest earned this fiscal year-to-date for the Water Enterprise account is $14,200, of which $2,991.02 is for the month of October. The accounts receivable for the Water Enterprise account that include active and inactive, and this also includes our October billing, is $45,554.74. The active 90 days, 90 days past due is zero. Our accounts receivable inactive 90 days past due is the remaining 25 accounts for $6,115.64. Our sales tax refund is $10.80. The total assets for the Water Enterprise account is two million, one hundred twenty thousand, five hundred and twenty-eight dollars and eighty-seven cents. Just to reiterate, the accounts payable from the Water Enterprise reimbursement due to the general fund for shared overhead expense for the month of October is twelve thousand, eight hundred fifty-one dollars and eighty-seven cents. The payroll due to the general fund for the operator in responsible charge is five hundred ninety-three dollars and eighty-two cents. Our total accounts payable for the month of June is thirteen thousand, four hundred and forty-eight dollars and sixty-nine cents. The water capacity fees for the month of October for the town, the town collected is three thousand dollars. The total year-to-date water capacity fees collected is thirteen thousand, five hundred dollars. Just for one additional note, just to let everyone know that Cindy Randolph, which is our towns auditor, has confirmed that there will be no need for an extension for the fiscal year twenty-three audit report as it is automatic, which includes no amended contract. She has also confirmed the audit will be completed by November thirtieth, and her presentation will be added to the December fourteenth agenda. The audit process has been smooth, and there have been no issues to date. Any questions?
Just one question, Kim. For the general fund, we have about two hundred and eighty thousand dollars of SEDARs that, that mature at the end of the month.
Yes.
Do you know what we're currently renewing at, the rates?
Four point zero is what Tammy Bar, Tammy sent today. Let me verify that.
Is that for one year?
Yes, I did ask, I did send back an email today. She did say that we had another one that was coming to you today, I'm sorry, next week. And I did ask her about the six-month. I'm just curious.
Okay.
What the six-month versus the twelve-month is. I'm sure the twelve's more, but I'm just curious.
Understood. Are there any questions for Kim, guys?
No, I don't have any. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Good report. Next, we'll move to citizens' comments. This is the period where citizens can address council, three minutes per speaker. Feel free to discuss anything you would like to. Also, as of note, we do have a citizens' comment period at the end of the meeting as well. So if you think you might want to speak and choose not to, you'll have an opportunity at the end of the meeting. We did have Mr. Bill Gobel sign up to speak, but you don't necessarily have to sign up. Just raise your hand and speak after that. Welcome, Bill.
Hello, I'm Bill Gobel, fourteen oh two West Ridge Road, Greensboro. Congratulations on winning your election. It's nice to keep the A-team together. I, I wanted to talk about a couple of things. When I was on the school board, I did not address some of the issues people coming at me, and I felt that was inappropriate because my job was to work for the school board and the kids and the parents and the students. So I didn't want to address that. So now that I'm not on the school board, I feel I have the opportunity to do that. So let me give you how I got stuck in this situation. In November, on January twenty-third, I was having coffee with David Gleason. He's an Eagle Scout like I am. He wanted to give me some Eagle Scout stuff, some headdresses to give the scouting. I said, that'd be great. So we talked about scouting and bourbon, and I said, tell me what's going on with the GOP. And he says, oh, we got this problem trying to seat the guy, and he said some inappropriate things on Facebook and social media. But we've, I think we got it solved. John Hardester's going to serve three names up. That's acceptable. And we're also going to change the law to clarify it. John Hardester's going to do that. So I said, he says, we're missing one name. I said, well, I'll tell you what. I'm willing to put my name and volunteer to help solve the problem, but let me check with my wife and see if she agrees. And so I called her, and she said, yeah, go ahead. So put my name in, and David called me the next day and said, are you sure? And I said, yes. And he said, okay, your name's in. I got a call from Chris Meadows. He says, I hear your name's going in. He said, I'd like to have lunch with you and discuss it. So I took him to lunch, told him that I was interested. I then called B. J. Barnes and said, B. J., how do I let the executive committee know that I have an interest? He said, you need to send an email to the David Gleason, who will send it out to the executive committee. Ask him to do that. I did that email, which I have copies, and it says, I support Michael Logan as school board. However, if you can't seat him, I'd like to be considered and serve. And I had a list of things that I wanted. I have all this documentation I had to get for a lawsuit. So, so I go ahead and do that, send it out, and then B. J. calls me, says, you got to meet these people on the executive committee. Call them and meet them. Spend an hour with Michael Logan, explain my position. Talked to most of the people on the executive committee. And I got emails back saying, yeah, you'd probably be good as a backup. I then just happened to be going to Raleigh the next week on other matters, and I was meeting Berger, Hardester, Justice Newby, and Faircloth about the other matter. And when we got in there, they said, we want to talk to you about the school board. Are you serious? You want to do that? And I said, yeah, I'd do it. Would you run again in March? I said, absolutely. They said, well, you'd be a good candidate with your background. And they, so had the conversation with each of them. Then Justice Newby called me, says, I need David Gleason's number. I want to call him and give my endorsement to you for this position, which he did, because he called me after and told me. So the three names were, now, this is the part I didn't learn until I got on the school board, because I asked Dina Hayes, how did you get my name? Because I don't know the lady. I didn't know anybody on the board. And she said, I got it from John Hardester. And when he gave us the three names, I told him I know the other two. I don't know Gobel. I want to check him out. So she came back and she said, Hardester, we're going to pick Gobel. Well, that went back to Gleason, went back to the executive committee, and you know who sits on the executive committee? Some of the people that were up here talking earlier. And they said, we're going back to one name, taking the three-name option off the table, which I didn't know anything about. So I heard that they were going back, you know, they were, they made a decision, the law was changed. Somebody called me, Hardester called me, a couple of other people, just to make sure I was serious. And they went back to one name, and they changed the law, and I figured, okay, it's over. You know, I've got a lot of other things to do in my life. I got two businesses, a nonprofit, a podcast, a family. I got a lot of things going on. So I figured, okay, God didn't want that door open. I'm going to go do something else. I was, I had a brother who was dying of cancer in California, and we were trying to get him back home to die with the family in Cleveland. So I went out to California, took the red-eye back on April third. April fourth was the board meeting. I get a call about eleven-thirty, twelve o'clock, from the chief of staff, Jose, who I know. And he said, Bill, would you take a meeting with Dina Hayes and Jill Wilson at Brooks Pierce? And I said, sure, but what's up? He says, I can't tell you. So I kind of figured something was up. Went and met him, and Jill had a PowerPoint done, and she says, I've talked to a bunch of lawyers in the state. The Republicans did not follow the law that was changed. And she found the way to get around it. Basically, they were supposed to do the full executive committee. They did just District Three. And so she said, because of that, we now can put anybody in we want, including a Democrat. And Bill, we want you, we want to stick with a Republican, or we're going to put a Democrat in. What's your decision? And I said, I'll, I'll serve, and the rest is what you see. But since then, the Republican Party has censored me, sued me, changed the law twice, and held a party disloyalty. And basically, I can't attend any GOP event. So I've never experienced anything like this in my life. I've been a Boy Scout. We volunteer to solve problems. So I just wanted to give you the full story. I don't expect you to buy everything. I, I just wanted to air what I know. And I plan to tell that story as much as I can, because I think if it happened to me, it can happen to anybody. So thank you for your time and let me run over. Any questions?
Guys, any questions for Bill? Thank you for being here, sir.
Thank you. And by the way, I did check onto two items that you folks wanted. One of them was, when we go through the security system, you had asked me that, Mr. Jones, if we went through this new security system, do we stop people and empty their bags? The answer is yes. If, if it identifies something that is funny, we make them stop and empty their bag. It's the same system that we're using at Tanger Center. You also asked me to take a look at swapping one acre for two acres, and I dug into that and found out we have a septic system on that. But that doesn't mean we can't do it. I think if I get back into position, I want to do it.
Yes, and, and that's certainly a negotiation I had with the school system.
Good. Well, we'll dig in and see if we can get it done.
Thanks, Bill.
Okay, bye.
Would anybody else like to speak during citizens' comments? Okay. Moving on in the agenda, next item and new business is the twenty twenty-three Stokesdale Christmas Parade. I think Robbie did a great job updating us on where we are to have twenty-two applications over a month. Parade applications over a month before the parade is, is quite an accomplishment. As we've done in years past, I'm going to ask for a spending authority to, so that we're able to advertise the parade in the Northwest Observer, get Portageons for downtown on Parade Day, get six deputies from the Sheriff's Department for safety, as well as any other small items that we might need in terms of decoration, anywhere from, you know, trash bags or candy to new Christmas lights or whatever we might see that we need. As in years past, asking for forty-five hundred dollars spending authority that I would like to oversee with the Events Committee and would like to request, and I'll include this in a formal motion, Jimmy Landrith also to oversee the spending on this, along with myself. So the money is in the budget. There's fifty-five hundred dollars in the budget in requesting forty-five hundred dollars. And I'll go ahead and make a motion and open it up for discussion, if that's okay. I'll make a motion to give the Events Committee forty-five hundred dollars that myself and Jimmy Landrith will oversee for the spending of the, to support the Christmas parade.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I'll open it up for discussion.
I, I do have some questions about how this functions.
Yes, sir.
Town of Stokesdale is going to delegate the parade committee authority to spend up to forty-five hundred dollars on the parade or delegate you and Jimmy to spend forty-five hundred dollars. If, if, if the word, I would want to see the minutes of the parade committee where there would be a motion and a second and a, and a, and a vote to approve an expenditure, or I'm, I'm okay with, with y'all having that authority if you, if you both agree.
In the years past, it's been, it's just been me as one council member. I prefer to have another one, just for optics.
Well, you know, would it be appropriate to amend your motion such that so long as you and Jimmy agree, the money can be spent up to forty-five hundred dollars?
Yeah, I'll accept that amendment. That'll work, and that mirrors previous years' motions. So Tim has amended the motion, and you still have your second?
Yeah, I'll, I'll second that.
Okay, got you. Any further discussion? Mr. Landrith?
Hi.
I'm also, excuse me, I'm also a while, but go ahead, Tim.
Bye.
All right. Motion passes three to zero. Next up on the agenda is consideration of proposal to install Christmas banners this month and to reinstall the Stokesdale banners. These are the banners you see hanging downtown. Normally, every year, we do have Christmas banners that we hang. We do have a quote from the company that has done this in years past. Robbie, I appreciate you putting that together. The quote is for one thousand dollars, five hundred dollars each time to install the Christmas, to take down the current banners that are downtown, put up the Christmas banners, do that this month. And then in January, they would take down the Christmas banners and put back up the current banners.
Correct.
So that is a thousand dollars. That thousand dollars is in the Events Committee budget. With that, I will make a motion to approve Price Mill Towing to do the, to install the Christmas banners and reinstall the regular Town of Stokesdale banners in January at a cost of one thousand dollars total.
I'll, I'll, I'll second the motion, but I would like to add an amendment to that.
Yes, sir.
Or, or we can cover this in discussion. I'm not sure which would be more appropriate. Well, I would like for the Town of Stokesdale to require all those, the people working with Price Mill, the driver, the fellow in the bucket, whoever is assisting them to wear reflective vests, the NCDO-type reflective vests, ju- just, just for safety. I observed them last year, and I became, I, I actually know Jerry personally, and I, I became concerned for their safety. You know, nothing happened, but it just, I think that, that needs to happen because it's just, it's dangerous out there on the side of the road. These guys are busy paying attention to what they're doing and not necessarily able to watch the traffic every second.
Sure.
What do we?
Robbie, if this motion passes, is that something you can communicate with?
Yeah, I can certainly reach out to, to Mr. Price and let him know that we would like that. I don't know how we could enforce it, but we could certainly.
Well, ask for it. Mr. Winfrey, it's just a condition of approving the contract. Can we do this?
Yeah, we can, you can relay to, to the contractor that it's approved on the condition that, A, you, your employees use reflective vests, if that's, then it's not approved. If it's not, if they don't do that, is that what I understand your, your desire is to say it's not approved if they don't do that?
That, that's correct. I, I, I don't know why they would say no. It doesn't seem logical. It's, it's their butt I'm trying to save, but.
Right, understood.
My, my one question to that would just be, we would just need a form of, of proof. I know sometimes he does this on the weekends, so I don't know that town staff could necessarily watch them install these and ensure that they're wearing this gear. They may want to provide proof of some sorts. I'm not sure. I don't have a way of going behind them and checking.
I think if we can formalize it in our request, and they accept that, I'd be sad. I'll take them at their word.
Okay, that works for me.
That, that sounds good.
Okay.
Okay. One other quick question, though. Did you want to specify any dates? It says November and January, or, or did you want to specify a week in which that's to happen? Or do you want to just leave it November and January?
We have had some complaints in the past about when are they going to take down the Christmas decorations, when, the Christmas banners? When are they going to take down the Christmas banners? And I think it depends on their workflow, when, the weather, and, you know, all those things. I would hate to, to, to paint them in too tight a corner, but I, I would think in January to remove them would be close enough. And then I think the parade committee could speak to this as to when they want them put up.
Yeah, okay. All right, we, we have a motion. We have a second. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not. I, I see where Tim's going, but they're independent contractors. I mean, you know, what are we gonna, we see them without their vests on, and they're best interests to have them on, there's no doubt about that. But, uh, I mean, I just, I can, I can see asking them to, please, that we, you know, we're concerned about getting run over.
Right.
But to just sit there. I mean, you know, these, these guys are pretty busy folks. I would whole lot rather somebody asked me to please do it, because we're afraid that somebody's going to get hit than to sit there and say I require it. If I was real busy and somebody told me that, I might just say, well, you know. But, you know, y'all do what you want to.
Well, that's, that's a good point, but if I didn't feel strongly about their safety, I wouldn't have made any mention of it.
Well, I feel strongly about their safety, too, but, you know. You're the type person, you don't like people telling you what to do. And I'm the type person, I don't particularly like telling, people telling me what to do either. They're giving us an excellent price, and of course, I don't want nobody to get run over. But to require, I don't know, you know, if they say no, then we're going to find somebody else.
Well, I've been involved in government contracts on numerous occasions. They always come with a string of responsibilities and requirements, or even in the private sector. It's not unusual. For example, a subcontractor would be required to wear certain safety gear, provide certain safety precautions, you know, et cetera, et cetera. A roofer might be required to provide fall protection on the roof, and the list goes on. Whatever council wants to do on this, but.
I mean, that's fine. Go ahead with it. I just, you know.
I think if they abided by OSHA guidelines, they would, we, we should be good here.
Do we have any responsibilities on this as a council, I mean, or as a town? No, these are our independent contractors, so, so we're not responsible if, if they're injured. It's this, or they injure someone else. So we don't say, it doesn't ma, it doesn't matter.
They're on the side of the roadway working for the Town of Stokesdale. Should an accident occur, would you be able to absolve us from all responsibility here?
Yeah, I don't see any, any theory into which the town could be responsible if, if this independent contractor injures somebody or, or an employee gets injured. I'm not seeing that the town would have any exposure. But I think it would not be harmful to say, we expect you to comply with applicable OSHA regulations when you perform this contract. And, and that may be kind of a middle road between requiring it and suggesting it. Just say, we expect you to do that. And that would, that would be more protection for the town.
Well, Mr. Winfrey, if you tell me the Town of Stokesdale has no liability whether they wear vests or not, I'll just withdraw the, the amendment that I'm requesting. Is, is that what I hear from you?
Yeah, we, we have no responsibility for, for this independent contractor performing that duty. That's correct.
Or, or any, any, any associated traffic accident from a citizen using the roadway?
I think that's correct, yes.
Okay.
Okay, Tim has withdrawn the amendment, which goes back to the original motion of approving the scope of work that Price Mill Towing has, has presented to us. Okay, Tim has withdrawn the amendment, uh, which goes back to the original motion of approving the scope of work that Price Mill Towing has, has presented to us. Uh, so, Tim, do you still have your second to the original motion?
Oh, oh, yeah, absolutely. Again, my, my, my concern is just with their, their safety and the motoring public.
And mine too, and, and I, and I don't have any problem with asking them to wear them, please.
Okay.
We don't want somebody to get run over. No problem with that, but, but, you know.
Is there any further discussion? If not, I'll call question. Jimmy?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
I'm also aye. Moving on on the agenda, we have item number ten, consideration of requests from Town of Stokesdale to North Carolina DOT regarding roadway projects. Uh, I'd like to turn this over to Mr. Jimmy Landrith.
Okay, yeah, as everybody knows, we, we had a meeting with the Fire Department and DOT, and they extended the comment, uh, period. Um, Todd, we've got the email that you sent with your recommendations. Would you mind if I have Robbie read part of that, please? Okay. Yeah, well, no, I know, but I, still, it's your email. As a courtesy, I'm asking you.
Je- Jimmy, if you don't mind, I'd like to, for it to be referred as, received by the town on November the seventh, two thousand twenty-three.
Yep, that's fine. That's, that's my other thing. It, would you read the, just read the, um, uh, recommendations?
Those three bullet points there?
Three bullet points.
Okay, yeah, yeah. So again, this is a email that I received back on Tuesday, uh, November the seventh, from Mr. Gordon. And, uh, these three bullet points state that, uh, number one is, if the travel lanes in all directions at the intersection of Highway one fifty-eight and Blues Creek Road are made left turn, right turn, and a straight lane. We believe it will add to the speed that vehicles traveling eastbound on Highway one fifty-eight proceed through the intersection. Do not have any to, uh, sorry, do to not having to flow for traffic, to slow for traffic. This problem would only be compounded due to the fact that there is a slight gnaw as you approach the intersection eastbound than would in a very short distance before proceeding into a roundabout. Uh, the second bullet point states that if a traffic roundabout is constructed at Ellisboro Road slash Blues Creek Road intersection. And nothing is done at the Highway one fifty-eight slash Blues Creek Road intersection due to the amount of tractor-trailer traffic that passes through those intersections. It will be back traffic through to, uh, Ellisboro Road slash Blues Creek Road intersection roundabout. Due to the short distance between the two intersections and the length of a tractor-trailer, you currently have to set at least two light changes or more, depending on the amount of traffic stopped to clear the intersection. The third bullet point states that the feeder side streets that intersect with Blues Creek Road, those being Newberry Street, Lester Road, and Baum Street. Are not suitable for handling traffic trailer, I'm sorry, tractor-trailer traffic in any form should traffic need to be detoured for any reason. We feel that this is an area that DOT should really take a look at.
Right. Todd, thank you and the Fire Department for doing that and attending the meeting with us. We value your opinion on this. Uh, my opinion, I, I'm just dodging stuff out there. Uh, I had a, since then, I've had another incident taking my kids, uh, grandkids to school, truck below the light. I mean, I'm talking about this time, it was like, you know, some time for the thing to go red. Um, I agree with everything that the Fire Department said, and I think council would probably own that.
Absolutely.
Those, those items. So I'd like to piggyback. Um, did y'all send these in, or you gonna just let us send it in?
We actually sent them to Robbie to be joined with yours so that they could just go in as one.
Good, okay. So, so I think council would, uh, well, I would like to piggyback, and if council approves. Of, of course, any council member can send anything they want to, again, as an individual council member, but as a council, we would need to, to all agree or, or quorum agree. Um, some, some things that I'd like to add, I think they really need to do some looking at that intersection at one fifty-eight. And, um, you know, it, it's, uh, some bad accidents waiting to happen right there. And I would have never thought about it if Chris hadn't have said something the other day about those turning lanes speeding that traffic up. You sure don't wanna speed it up, you know, going through there. Uh, so, you know, I'd like for them to, to, you know, and take in consideration. Another thing that, that I would hope that council would agree with. Um, I would like for them to try to, uh, not affect our businesses on Main Street, uh, any more than they have to. Uh, you, you start taking parking from, um, from, uh, businesses, and they start, it starts limiting on what they can do. And they got the big medium over there. They could move over a little bit if they just think about that. Uh, you know, just take that in consideration. Um, another thing, uh, you know, down at Sammy Logan's Tire Shop, his business is gonna be affected. I think he would rather sell out. Um, than just get hemmed in. He's almost hemmed in now, and I'm sure, I think Sammy and him has already, uh, talked with him, but I wish, I wanna, I wish they'd take it in consideration. A lot of people in here probably wouldn't think about it, but Sammy Logan, he's been there, I think, since, I don't know, in nineteen eighties, middle nineteen eighties. And, um, uh, he, you wouldn't think about it, but he's performed, he's got a good service down there to a lot of people that, you know, can't afford new tires and things. He's done that for years. And you, I know most people think, oh, you know, but he has, you know, it's helped a lot of people out over the years. And, uh, I just hope that they can, if there's ways to work around there and not affect anybody, and I, and I'd like for them just to think about it. And it's not I'm trying to give anybody any special treatment or anything, but, but the businesses have been there for years, and, uh, I just hope they'll take it in consideration. Of course, we want the roads as safe as we possibly can get them. Uh, but, but I, I would like to, I'd like council to, you know, the things I've just said. Uh, I hope you wrote that down, 'cause I'll forget it. Uh, and then any additions any of you guys might, you know, wanna make or, or think about. Uh, does anybody think I'm out of line by saying that? By, you know, like I said, I'm not trying to favor people, and by, by no means. I just want them to look at it and, and keep that in mind, not to, uh, right, possibly not mess anybody's businesses up. Of course, sometimes you, you have no choice. They're, they're the experts, so.
Well, Jimmy, I agree with, with everything you, you said, obviously, and, and also I wanna thank Todd and the Fire Department for putting this list together. I also agree with everything on this list. Uh, so certainly would want to include that, uh, this list in the motion.
Right.
Uh, you know, it, it did appear from our DOT meeting that a roundabout had not been really vetted out at the one fifty-eight Blues Creek, uh, intersection, Blues Creek Road intersection. A takeaway from that meeting that I inferred that the DOT would explore that as being an option. And I know, I've, I've had s- more than several folks tell me, Stokesdale doesn't need roundabouts, and, and I can understand that perspective, you know, being a small town. But we also have three busy highways going through our small town, and, you know, these are traveled daily. Uh, you know, high, high volumes of traffic, especially this area we're talking about, one fifty-eight and Blues Creek Road and Ellisboro and, uh, sixty-five. You know, by, by folks coming from Rockingham County to and from, or, you know, Winston-Salem, so. Uh, even though we're, we are indeed a small town, we do have a lot of traffic from folks that do not live around here coming through that intersection. Uh, so, you know, if, if a roundabout is at least explored and, and vetted out, uh, you know, I would be satisfied with that. If for some reason they could not do a roundabout there at a minimum coming east, you know, coming from Walker Town, we do need rumble strips or, or flashing lights. We need, we need something to slow that traffic down because there's really, there's really nothing to slow that traffic down once you get through those traffic lights, uh, or, or the traffic light there at Piney Grove Road. Uh, and once you go over that lake, you're just kinda cruising, so. And for those that aren't, that don't know, a small town is on the horizon, you know, they're, they're probably, they're probably the ones moving the fastest through that, uh, stretch of highway, so.
We could, you know, like I said, there's a lot of, there's a lot of stoplight pulling there, and I mean bad stoplight pulling. I, I'm surprised that some, that hadn't been a terrible accident there. Uh, that's, that's the fourth time this year, and I don't take my grandkids to school every day. I take them some, and I was actually on the phone with Derek, and I had it hands-free too, so I wasn't holding it. And, uh, and I said, you remember me saying it?
Yeah, I remember.
You know, I said, well, and I, I've learned a long time ago, uh, uh, taking a, uh, accident-producing situation class, if I hadn't have taken it, I'd be dead, but now probably all the people had to dodge. But I don't take off. I don't care if you toot your horn at me or what. I'm not taking off when the light turns green. I'm gonna make sure everybody stopped and, and, uh. But, you know, that's, that's the one thing, that, that intersection, we need to, uh, make sure that they're looking at everything possible there to do something about it. And, and so I'd love to see something done right now that would slow it down, um, before they ever start building. I mean, if we could, you know, I don't know, rumble strips. I mean, I kinda hate that in a way 'cause, you know, they're kind of a little noisy, but, uh, some signs up, um, you know, something right away. Policeman under tree or something, you know, uh, sign, something, um, you know. So, uh, Tim, would you like to add anything? I mean, do you, did you agree or disagree with what we said, or, 'cause we want, you wanna go as a council on some of these items?
I, I asked for this agenda item. I'm, I'm kinda concerned about which direction we should go in. I don't think, uh, I don't have a crystal ball either. But, uh, I've been here in December, it'd be six years. I've served in a council seat plus time on the planning board, et cetera, et cetera. And in that time period, the Town of Stokesdale hasn't had any, any particular liaison with NCDOT. NCDOT has come here and said, this is what we're thinking about doing. This is what we're planning for, and, and, you know, here's the map, and. There hasn't been a, a, a lot of solicitation from NCDOT for input from the Town of Stokesdale, and I, I don't, you know, we, we, we can all render our opinion. Council members and citizens, Fire Department, uh, have voiced a concern that maybe the town should talk to a traffic engineer and retain them on some basis. Uh, and, and that has its own set of problems, uh, you know, budgetary, management of that, and the time that it would take. So I don't have a, a clear-cut answer for this, but I do know that NCDOT presented this R fifty-eight twenty-three plan to the Town of Stokesdale at the end of September. And, uh, they have since extended the comment period to the end of this November, and then they will be back rolling with it, uh, at their own discretion. I don't know what's appropriate. Uh, the Town of Stokesdale could request that they delay this project, uh, pending more, more, uh, involvement with the Town of Stokesdale in whatever form that might take. Uh, we can do nothing and allow our citizens to have their own input directly with NCDOT, likewise with council members. Uh, you know, I, I think the one fifty-eight sixty-five intersection is, is kind of a ticking tom- a time bomb in, in some ways. I see the, see the same traffic everybody else does there, and, uh, I see the red lights being run and the heavy truck traffic. Uh, I, at the very, very least, I'd like to see the Town of Stokes, you know, this council vote and, and ask for some type of, uh, roadway improvement to, uh, the west end of one fifty-eight. Before Stokesdale such that traffic would be, at least has some chance to be notified. There's a congested area ahead. There's a small town ahead. In some form, flashing light or rumble strips, or like Mr. Floyd mentioned, I don't know what the appropriate, uh, installation would be. But I, I do know that we kinda went through this with, uh, NC sixty-eight years ago with, when we had heavy traffic before seventy-three opened and NCDOT. Uh, wasn't that interested in putting up anything, uh, beyond the, the speed limit signs and, uh, traffic signal ahead, that type of thing? And so I don't, I don't know where to go here. Uh, the, 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 the traffic engineer has, has not, not been really received by council for the most part. I, I, I don't know whether it's because of the budget concerns or because of functionality or both. Hadn't had a lot of conversation with the other council members. Uh, and so, uh, I don't know what motion I would make. I, I think if nothing else, I'd like to continue this item into, to our December meeting. We're short two council members tonight, which is unfortunate. This is kind of a big deal. And, uh, you know, those are my, those are my thoughts, at the very least, to continue this to December.
I'm not willing to, I mean, to wait till December unless it's voted to, to wait till December, 'cause we had them extend the com- we asked for the extension of the comment period, and it's up on November the thirtieth. And, uh, whether they'll do that or not, I mean, I think we should at least do something. I mean, we've got, we've got comments. I mean, that's what they've asked for. Uh, you know, if you still wanted to try to slow them down or, or, um, I mean, I, you know, we're, we're not in the highway business. And we're definitely not the experts. Uh, they're supposed to be our experts, like the Fire Department's our experts for putting fires out, medical calls and things. So we, we've got a comment period, period that's gonna be up, so we've got an opportunity to, to send in what we do have. And, um, and any, you know, if you wanna add something, I mean, I, I just don't feel like we could, should see it and, and wait for them to, you know, be done with their comment period. I, I just don't, I don't think they're gonna sit there and wait for us forever. Uh, I'm actually surprised they, they moved it this time.
Well, they agreed to take a second look at it, but we don't know what their findings will be with their second look.
They're still, I mean, they're not, uh, I, I don't think anything that they've done is in stone. Um, I don't think, 'cause they had several different options and things. But they hadn't even really considered the, uh, one fifty-eight, um, sixty-five intersection, other than, you know, the, what they were, you know, looking at. I don't think they realized the traffic concerns that we had, and they were willing to, and I'm sure it's gonna take a little time for them to do that. So, I mean, we send something in and, um, and if we get anything else in December meeting, we can talk about it again, but, um.
I, I agree with the, uh, eleven, the end of November deadline, that we should send something in as a council, if that's what we're gonna move forward with. The three bullet points the, the Fire Department submitted, I'd like to see those submitted and endorsed by the Town Council, uh, just as they're written. I'd also like to reiterate, uh, and, and maybe thank the DOT for further vetting out the possibility of a roundabout at one fifty-eight and Blues Creek Road. And, uh, express our concern about fa- uh, tr- traffic moving at significant speeds coming east on one fifty-eight. Uh, you know, and to request them look at flashing signs to slow down and/or rumble strips.
Why don't you go ahead and say it all in a motion, and see if you might do it again, 'cause I'm gonna let you do it.
Okay, do you have anything else that you would add to that?
I'm sure I could sit here long enough. I've thought about it a lot, and that is, I'm sure we'll all think about other things, and you know, if we do, we can always send in a comment, but, you know, as a council. Um, I, I'd just like to see, I mean, you know, what the, what the Fire Department here has got is great, and, um, we got, I just feel like we've gotta send something in.
Okay. Um, I, I'll make a motion that the Town of Stokesdale, uh, endorse the, uh, concerns and recommendations. Uh, the, the Chief Gordon of the Stokesdale Fire District submitted to us in an email on Tuesday, submitted to Robbie on an email from Tuesday, November seventh, at three twenty-four P M. Uh, to include those three bullet point items. I would also like to add into motion, uh, that a bullet point item be added. Uh, expressing our gratitude, uh, for their commitment to vet out a roundabout at the one fifty-eight and sixty-five, or Blues Creek Road intersection. Uh, as well, I would like to communicate that at a minimum, that the Town Council would like to see rumble strips and/or flashing lights encouraging, uh, travelers to slow down coming east on one fifty-eight as you enter the Town of Stokesdale core.
Make a statement about the small businesses trying to, uh, be, uh, least impact possible.
Absolutely. Also to, to reinforce the Town Council's position, uh, to, to have the minimum amount of impact as possible on small businesses and/or property owners in town. All right, that's my motion.
I'll second.
All right.
Is it part of your motion that, that, that this be communicated to NCDOT before November thirtieth?
Absolutely, from, from, from the town clerk.
Yeah, go ahead and say it. I mean, we may end up with some, something else that we wanna, you know, do. I mean, it's early in the month, but, but I definitely don't wanna wait till December to do anything. I'll second.
Uh, uh, okay, just to, just to recap, you want to request some traffic common measure like rumble strips or flashing lights?
Coming east on one fifty-eight as, uh.
But before the intersection of, uh, sixty-five and one fifty-eight?
Right, as it goes down from forty-five to thirty-five, right there in front of, probably around Nancy's house.
Yeah, I, I was just wondering how, I, I wanna make sure that we're clearly communicating the NCDOT. Like, I know where Nancy lives, but they don't.
Well, that was me and you talking.
You know what I'm saying. You know what I'm saying.
Please don't put Nancy by name in there.
The, the purpose being to get the motorists detention and, and get them slowed down to thirty-five mile an hour.
Correct.
I'd just like to see some of them stop.
Yeah.
I mean, most people are stopping. It's, it's, you know, it's always a bad apple, but, you know.
I don't think we can add a sign that says red means stop.
Yeah, I know. We need to do something though. What they do is catch some of them, get it, get it out, you know.
All right, we're asking, we're asking NCDOT to minimize impact on businesses and, and taking, uh, taking parking away and, uh, uh, private property.
And private property, just, just any private property, absolutely.
Robbie, you got that.
Now, what was that third one?
I got it, yeah.
Can you read?
Expressing our appreciation for their commitment to further vet out a roundabout at the one fifty-eight Blues Creek Road intersection.
Okay, can we fudge that a little bit to reevaluate the, the, uh, intersection of one fifty-eight and sixty-five with the intent of, uh, slowing traffic?
Yeah, I mean, that, that's anything, I mean, it could be, yeah, I guess that would.
I don't know if we need a roundabout. I don't know if that's the solution, but I'm, I'm just saying that.
Well, their, their commitment from the meeting was to look at that as an option.
This would be no surprise to them.
You can put, you can put that and put, and any other solutions.
Yes.
That'd be okay to add that.
Please, please.
And, and.
I just wouldn't want them to hear the town of Stokesdale's asking for a roundabout, so we need to, uh, design a roundabout for that intersection.
Yeah, no, I'm not necessarily saying I'm.
I tried to use my words carefully when I said to express our appreciation for their commitment to vet it out. That's all, that's all I'm saying. I'm not saying do it or.
No, 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 ha- have no problem, uh, just, you know, we're kinda on the fly here, not having this drafted, uh, and, and without any input from our own experts, so that's just why I'm trying to be sure I got the bullet points captured on my notice at least. So, help me understand what we're doing.
Yeah, what, what I'll probably do is, is after, uh, the meeting, I'll go back and just make sure I've captured everything. I'll put it in writing and I'll send it to you all to confirm that this sounds correct.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, just to make sure nothing's missed, and then I'm gonna send it to them. I, I mean, I would certainly need a response back by the thirtieth to make sure everything looks good, but. Absolutely. Thank you, Robbie.
Okay, so we're thanking them for their commitment to reevaluate, uh, the intersection of one fifty-eight sixty-five, which is what they said they would do.
Yes.
Now, don't we need to just go he- we need to make, go ahead and send this, let's don't wait till, we, we're not gonna wait till the last minute, you're gonna put this together?
Yeah, absolutely. I'll put it together, I mean.
You got Thanksgiving a week coming up, I mean, I wanna make sure they get it and.
Understood. I'll work on, I, I will be gone next week, but I'll, I'll work on it Monday while I'm here.
Yeah.
And I'll get it to you all.
Well, as, as part of this motion, let's just go ahead and authorize Mr. Floyd to review the draft from Mr. Wagner, and if he approves it, it'll be sent.
That's fine, that's good.
Sounds good. All right.
That's good.
Okey-dokey, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion, gentlemen? If not, I'll call question. Jimmy?
Huh?
Tim?
Aye.
I'm also aye. That brings us to our next agenda item, ten A, water thieves. All right, Jimmy.
I've been hearing we had some thieving going on. And, uh, I'd like for the, uh, Mr. Winfrey to check in on what you think we can do about it.
You, there's a lot going on?
Water, water thieves hooking up to the hydrants with trucks and all over town. And, um, I just wondered, can we pass some type of an order, type of an ordinance? Uh, I mean, I know stealing water is illegal, but, uh, uh, we need to do something, put some teeth in it, um, and, and stop it. Cause we've had, we have quite a bit, from what I understand.
How are these reports reaching you, Mr. Landorf?
Well, there's people calling in saying they seen it. Didn't Chris say he seen one? They thought he possibly won, uh, up at, uh,
Yeah, there was a, uh, quite a bit of water problem out there.
Yeah.
Uh, so we were just wondering, was there a water problem? Or was somebody buying water and it just, when we see water, first thing comes to our mind is, is, I don't know, may have a leak.
Yeah.
First thing we're trying to figure out.
Yeah.
Uh, but obviously it, it wasn't a leak when we got it on the way it was. So I think he just called and said, hey, you know, um, you got this, this wet area up here. Anybody getting water or anything like that, you get any calls on it, but we, we didn't see anything other than just.
Well, yeah, it's, it's one, um, trucks don't need to be pulling up, fill in their trucks, uh, with, with the water and, you know.
I, I, I just, usually the staff sends out an email, so I'm just asking, was this, this like a tanker?
Yes.
Filling up a swimming pool or somebody getting?
We don't know, but we, uh, it's been said, you know, a couple places at different times. We don't have anybody, uh, I think one had a possible picture or something. But I don't have all that information. I just know, I keep hearing about it, and, um, I wanna see what we can do and, and, uh, see if we can stop it.
Okay, typically, is somebody hauling bulk water, is somebody doing pressure washing? Or sometimes the guys that are doing, uh, horizontal, horizontal boring, what will get into our water system? But, you know, beyond that, we just, I think everybody can agree with, it's a public water supply, we don't like anybody tampering with the fire hydrant.
I don't care what they're doing with it, I mean, they're, they're backing up.
That's against state law.
Yeah, I suspect there's statutes already, I, I haven't had to research it, but I suspect there's statutes already dealing with the, uh, tampering with the fire hydrants for the purposes of.
We, we need to, we need to find out, and we need to get with the sheriff's department.
Yeah.
And have them, when they see a big truck, maybe they can stop, uh, cause, don't they have a paper? Don't you get a paper up here when you get a, uh?
We, we have a bulk water purchase policy, yeah.
Yeah, so you, so that, so they'd have a paper, and then, you know, you catch a couple and they'll stop doing it.
Wh- what about if we have Chuck clarify the state statute? Uh, there also might be even a federal one too, I, I.
And it may be that you, and I would also like to, I'll look into the authority of the town to impose a fine.
Fine.
If any, if anybody has caught doing it.
Just, just look into it for us, so, you know, uh, it's, it's, you know, people coming from out of town, or, I mean, they shouldn't even be doing it in town, but they're coming out of town with the big trucks and filling up the water system, you know, and, uh.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, Jimmy. My question would be, what would constitute proof? Would a picture do it? The sta- town staff member need to see it and attest that they were connected to a, a fire hydrant? Uh, if, if, if we call a deputy, uh, it may turn out that the deputy's going to basically say, well, I really need to be the one to witness that the theft before I can, uh, you know, make an arrest or pursue this, you know, one of those kinda things, so, uh, I mean, how, we, 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 we know we don't like it, we, we, we know we catch them occasionally. What we don't know is what, what kinda proof we need to either find them or have the sheriff's department take further action against them.
Well, I think it's, if somebody broke into your house and you had camera evidence, that would be enough for the sheriff to take the next steps uh, under the law. So I would think, I don't know, but I would think that there would be commonalities there between that, if there's proof.
I, I don't, I don't wanna even, I, all I want is Mr. Winfrey to, to look into it a little bit and see what our options are. And, um, I mean, if we need to vote on it, that's fine, I wouldn't intend on doing a vote, I just wanna do it, and that way the public and everybody had time to, you know, thirty days from now, we can talk about it again, if we wanna move forward with it.
Well, often the biggest problem is, is establishing who it is that's doing it, if, unless you get a license plate or.
I know you got, you know, you can't.
You got how, who's doing it.
I mean, I, I, I realize that, but, you know, what, what can't we do, cause this is, this has gone on some, and, I mean, you know, this need to.
Well, Mr. Landorf, unless you want to, I, I would suggest we have Mr. Wagner contact, maybe contact Sergeant Seals with District One, and just kinda bounce this off of him as to what the sheriff's department needs in, in the way of information in order to take action against that, that individual and report back to council.
That's fine. You hear that, Robbie?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine. I don't think we need a motion for that.
Just information.
Yep, that's all.
So, does the council want me to look at the state statutes?
Yeah, just look at it and see, you know, where we stand and what we're talking about, and, cause I don't know what we're talking about. I just know, you know, that it's being done, and, and, um, I think it's a federal offense to tamper with a public water supply also.
I, I believe so too, absolutely.
Yeah.
All right, is there any further discussion? All right, I believe, uh, Mr. Winfrey and Robbie have their directives. Uh, we'll move on to item ten B, maintenance on the covered part of the front entrance of town hall. Uh, Mr. Jones.
Uh, yes, sir, I, I come into town hall frequently and look up, and we, we have a few wasp nests and mud dovers and old bird nests up above, uh, on the ceiling of the, the entranceway. And there's only three ways I know to get up there, unless somebody can hover, that would be an A-frame ladder or a scissor lift or some other type of lift. I happen to have a, for the time being, have a, a lift rented that I'm using with my own personal business. And I spoke to Councilman Landorf earlier today and told him I would volunteer to help him get up there and, and clean those, uh, clean that up. Need council's permission to do it, as I see it, and, uh, it's just basically housekeeping. It wouldn't be a problem if it were down on the ground. And I'm wi- willing, I'm willing to volunteer to do that, so long as, uh, Councilman Landorf will assist me, or I assist him, one or the other.
Okay, would you like to, uh, put that into a motion?
You, you sure we shouldn't put that on Riggsby since he's not here?
Yeah, that's.
Or the mayor. Put it on me.
That'd teach him not to show up, right?
That's right. I'm big glad to.
Yeah.
It's, it beats standing down there with that ladder, on the ladder, from what we have been doing.
Well, it's just.
It's a habit, so.
I would say we do pay, we are in a service contract, uh, with the company, uh, for these type of treatments, I believe. They may not have.
We're talking about getting the stains off of, trying to get the stains off. It may not come off.
Okay, so it's not just nest removal, it's, okay.
Get it off and.
All right.
Possibly, possibly remove the stain.
Well, there, there's some old nests up there, there's some old, uh, bird nests there, there's, uh,
Okay.
Mud, mud dober nest, uh, it, it's really no amount of work, it's the, just getting to it is the problem, so.
I've been doing it with a ladder and a scraper on, on an extension.
Well, the boom truck would be better.
About this lift.
Yeah.
We'll be able to get up there and.
All right, well.
Good job with it.
If you wanna put that into a motion, I'll be happy to second which.
I, I'll make a motion that the town council allow me to, uh, give me consent to, uh, work with Mr. Landorf to, uh, uh, clean up that area, remove the, uh, bird nest, the mer- the, uh, bees nest, the, and the, uh, dirt dovers. And to a reasonable degree, using, uh, standard housekeeping type techniques and supplies that we will provide.
Okay, I'll second the motion. Is there any further discussion?
And, and this is in no way a commitment to make sure it gets done, by the way, and we'll do the best we can.
That's right, cause we do have some scheduling conflicts, it may not, so we'll do it if we can get it done.
All right, that sounds great. I'll still second the motion. Uh, any further discussion? Seeing that there is none, I'll call question. Jimmy?
Huh?
Tim?
Aye.
I'm also aye. Next item on the agenda is citizens' comments from the floor. Ms. Theory, Robbie?
Will you, will you take her, uh, the mic? Thank you.
Yep.
First of all, I'd like to congratulate all of you that won. Now, while you're talking about cleaning up out, up on the roof there, could you get some of the bugs out of here? They've been here as long as I've been living here. The lights, I mean, this is a million dollar building, and, I mean, I wouldn't even let these bugs be in my house. So while you're cleaning, there's over that way, over this way, and Tim, one time you told me you were gonna do it.
Yes, ma'am, I do, I do recall you, you bringing this up before I do.
So, um.
I'm, I'm guilty.
Make it my Christmas present then, okay?
Will you give, uh?
Eileen, what more do you have? Tim and Jimmy have all.
Give Ms. Theory, give Ms. Theory, uh, uh, Jim Riggsby's phone number, he's the chairman of the property committee. Tell him he can borrow my ladder.
But you know how men need a woman to motivate them, so that, here it is.
It's just that, um, you lose concentration. I'm counting the bugs instead of listening to you.
That might be a good thing.
Okay, so thank you.
Thank you for your feedback.
Yeah, it, it's just common sense.
That machine won't come in here, though, that he's talking about. I wish it would.
I promise I'll loan Jimmy Landorf.
He made that promise to me.
I, I'll loan Jimmy Landorf or Jim Riggsby my ladders to get that done.
Jim, Jim is the chairman of the property committee.
And I'll get, I'll get you some donuts if you do it.
I don't need to do that, you're really talking. All right.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Theory. Are there any additional citizen comments from the floor? Kathy? Yeah. Good evening, Kathy.
Hey there, um, Catherine Bundoff, eighty-two oh two, Mercuri. Um, I'm here because although I came late to the meeting, I had a prior commitment, I didn't hear you mention anything about pedestrian concerns or accommodations in the discussion of what you were bringing to DOT. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so, um, if men need women to motivate them, I'm here to motivate you to think about pedestrian accommodations in this town. I brought my concerns, I wrote them and dropped them off here. I didn't hear any mention of my concerns with pedestrian accommodations along the roadways in this town. So, my question is why?
I will say I did read your comments, just to make sure that you weren't ignored.
When did you, I, 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 I don't remember.
Did you send those out to council?
At least, I think it was the day of the meeting.
What, which day? What, I mean?
Uh, the workshop meeting we had.
Did you send it on, it was on my regular, I mean, my outlook? It was on my outlook, you know, I didn't get it. So, I'm sorry, I didn't get it, uh.
Kathy, a conversation I've had with the DOT before concerning sidewalks is that, that's not their wheelhouse, and that's something.
I understand that. I'm talking signage, I'm talking signals. Yeah, particularly here, and I know at, at sixty-eight and one fifty-eight, I've heard, well, there's a US highway coming through there, we really can't touch it. And I won't accept that, because I cross on foot, and the signal does not accommodate pedestrians. If there is someone turning left and I'm going straight, but there's no one traveling straight, I don't get that light. I have to wait on vehicle traffic that's traveling the same direction I am. So, you could fix the way the signal operates to always allow straight travel with every light cycle, or you could put a pedestrian button there, if that's permissible. I wear a vest when I walk along here, but I think one of the amazing amenities of this town is that it grew up along a railway, and that shaped the town to make it innately walkable, and we're not capitalizing on that. And I feel like step number one is protect our intersections for pedestrians.
Okay.
Not big stuff, but maybe a button signal.
Okay, thank you.
That's a good point, yeah, you know, that's, I didn't, hadn't even thought about it. We did have somebody get killed up there on that intersection, not ten, twenty years ago. Uh, somebody been there, living there a long time, and, so you, you got a great point.
I'm a, I'm a practiced pedestrian, I'm not wild and crazy, um, but I cross with kids. And I'm very serious about, um, pedestrians being visible and expected, and, um, automobiles knowing what to do around pedestrians, so, thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Winfrey, um, I know that we're in citizens' comments, would it be improper to go back and, and, um, and add that we would like for them to look at the intersections for pedestrian traffic? Because the only thing they're looking at, the, the group that we're sending to will be the sixty-five, one fifty-eight corridor over there, they won't be looking at the sixty-eight. And we can say something to them, but as far as this matter that we did tonight, that, that wouldn't cover that. But we can, you know, we can do that on a, a different, uh, occasion, and we can actually send that in, you know. And I only think we need, and I, I think everybody up here agrees that, that that would be a good idea.
Absolutely.
But I, I would like to make a motion that, uh, that we add that to our list, that they would look at, uh, uh, pede- uh, pedestrian safety. Would that be sufficient for what you're thinking?
So I guess you're look, you're discussing a motion to reconsider what you'd done previously.
A motion to reconsider, um, to add that, uh, to our comments that go to DOT. And I think that would be a good thing. And I'm not saying that they're gonna do anything, but, but we can ask them to, and they might. And, you know, if you don't ask them, you're sure not gonna get it.
I'll second the motion.
But I'm glad you came, cause I, I didn't see you email. I've been having an email problem, so I've, I've been embarrassed a little bit, but it is what it is, so. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second.
You, you probably, for the benefit of Mr. Rigsby, should recap that motion if he's gonna vote.
Go ahead, Jimmy.
Well, I guess we first need to vote on the motion to reconsider, um, so, so to reopen it, then, then make a motion to amend it.
Okay, and that requires a super majority?
No, to reconsider, no, you just need a simple majority. Just it needs to be made by someone on the prevailing side, which was unanimous, as I recall, anyway.
Okay.
So the motion to reconsider the matter, agenda item, um, I guess it was item ten on the agenda.
All right, I'll make a motion to reconsider item ten, uh, the D O T comment period.
I'll second the motion.
And, um, okay, so we got to vote.
Yeah, we're voting on a motion to reconsider. Is there any discussion? Uh, seeing there is none, we'll call question. Jim?
Ah.
Jimmy?
Ah.
Tim?
Aye.
I'm also aye.
And, uh, I'd like to make a motion that, um, we add pedestrian safety to the, um. Comment, period comments, for them to, uh, look into that.
Consideration for pedestrian safety.
Yeah, consideration. Right.
Or, or.
And that could be over the whole corridor. For them to look into it, see what they can do to improve it. Although we've had, we had somebody killed there on one fifty-eight. I've got a friend that got, his, uh, mother got killed right there years ago. And, uh, then we had, I cannot remember the young man's name. Wouldn't, well, he's not a young man, I don't think, but you remember that, don't you, Todd? Yeah, he got killed over there, um, so. It'd be something to, to look into. That's two deaths.
Okay.
That's a good enough motion. Mr. Winfrey?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing there is none, call question. Jim?
Ah.
Jimmy?
Ah.
Tim?
Aye.
I'm also aye. All right, we, we are continuing with citizens' comments. Would anybody else like to speak tonight? All right, we'll close out, seeing that there are none, we'll close out the citizens' comment period and we will move into council comments. Mr. Rigsby?
Hey, welcome, everybody. I'm glad, sorry I was late, but, uh, I had a, uh, previous engagement and it ran a little bit long, so, uh. Believe it or not, they let me handle the money over there. So it's a good thing I got that out of my system tonight. But I appreciate y'all coming out, appreciate everybody voting, regardless of how you vote, you know, I, I say all the time. Uh, I do a lot of speaking to the Boy Scouts about municipal elections and everybody knows who the president is, everybody knows who your governor is. But ninety-nine percent of what affects your daily life happens on the, on the municipal level. In the schools, in the, in the towns, where your parks are, in your water, and I just appreciate everybody coming up, being part of the process. Thank you very much.
I also wanna thank, uh, all the folks here, uh, tonight and, uh, safe travels if you're going anywhere over the Thanksgiving weekend, or, yep. Jimmy?
I'd like to thank all the folks that did have their faith in me and, uh, well, Derek and Jim, because I'm glad to see that they won. I actually would rather them win than me if somebody was gonna have to sit out. But, uh, it worked out for us and, uh, we appreciate people having the confidence in us. Um, you know, we, I think sometimes we take for granted that we get to vote. You think about all these places that they don't get to vote. Um, there's wars everywhere now and we're sitting here fat and happy and, uh, doing good and our troubles. Some of the things that, that, uh, we're concerned about are just nothing compared to, you just go, uh, you know, maybe a few hundred miles or, or a few thousand miles. And, um, it's just, just awful things going on, so be happy you live in a great town. I am, I'm, I'm happy. And I live in a great town. It's peaceful. We had an election. We didn't have any fights or anything, not, not quite. Uh, we miss Patty Stokes. We didn't get any pictures, so. But, uh, thanks, everybody, for coming tonight and I, I hope, uh, we're getting some things done that you wanna see done.
Thank you, Jimmy. Tim?
Uh, yes, I'd like to thank everybody for coming tonight and, of course, thank you to the staff, uh, council members. Mr. Rigsby will fill you in on all the things we volunteered you for while you were gone.
I'll, I'll just watch the YouTube. It'd be all right.
The, um, you know, this time of the year, uh, you know, in many ways, things slow down, but yet at the same time, they speed up with a lot of people traveling, a lot of activities. And, uh, I would just, you know, like to, like to preach safety to everyone, especially on the roads, whether you're on wheels or on foot. And, uh, anyhow, that's all I got to say.
All right, that closes out council comments. I'll move on to announcements. Uh, Stokesdale Town Hall will be closed tomorrow, uh, November tenth. An observance of Veterans Day. The town hall building will also be closed on Thursday, November twenty-third and Friday, November twenty-fourth, uh, with the Thanksgiving holiday. And lastly, the town of Stokesdale Town Council will hold their next regularly scheduled meeting on Thursday, December fourteenth, twenty-twenty-three at seven P M. Uh, inside the town hall council chambers. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Right, I'll second it. Uh, Jim?
Ah.
Jimmy?
Ah.
Tim?
Aye.
I'm aye.
Was that short enough?
All right, meeting adjourned. Good evening, folks.
That's all, folks. Wait a minute here, I just saw we paid Mr. Winfrey twenty-seven hundred dollars. Wish we would discuss that. There may be, there might be more in there. There might be more in there. Where are you being?
Hey, I gotta talk to you. Before you, uh, pack up, I've got a great official photo.
Well, we're done for season.
Laptop open. Stand there. Give me your deputy clerk look. All right, you never know when I might need to use. Well, now I need you to give me your deputy clerk look.